And.
Recording in progress.
Welcome everyone to our special city council meeting. We're looking forward to really a dynamic presentation here shortly about homeless services and all of the amazing providers, including city staff and the organizations who are here this evening. It's very inspiring for us to get together and share this, the task and the caring that we're all trying to accomplish. Before we do that, I'm going to ask our friendly city clerk to explain how people at home can participate in this meeting. So Clementine, then following that, we'll do the pledge.
Sounds good. So there are two ways to virtually participate in today's meeting. You may join using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device, and you can also call into the Zoom meeting. To join the meeting on Zoom on your computer, smartphone, or telephone, use the link or phone number on the agenda at icertchmonterey.org. To call in by telephone, dial toll free eight three three five six eight 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 six four, and then enter meeting ID one six one three eight four 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 zero pound. And if prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions on using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you're dialed in by phone, raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself when called upon by dialing star six. You will need to do both. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. I will call on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. Please stay within the time limit established for today's meeting and a countdown timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, that timer is accurate with no delay. Today's meeting is also streamed live on the city's YouTube account at youtube.com/cityofmonterey with about 10 seconds delay and on Comcast channel 25 up to 90 seconds delay. And as always, we look forward to receiving your public comments.
Okay, thank you. As always Clementine, well done. We'll call our meeting officially to order. And Clementine, if you will, please display the flag over Colton Hall as you always so ably do. I would invite everyone to join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. And as I mentioned earlier, we're going to go right into presentations because we have a really excellent cadre of experienced, helpful people who are in the community, just working with the homeless, with providing services. It's just absolutely amazing. I would recommend anyone who's watching or may want to watch this later to take a look at the staff report. It's something that would be easily downloadable and I think you will be absolutely amazed at all of the efforts that are going on out there. So without further ado, let's go ahead to our first class city manager Hans Uslar, who can make some introductions, please.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. What we have planned tonight is something like speed dating. Everybody knows all the organizations here that are on our screen and that will present. And I personally know quite a few of those representatives for many, many years. And the city has collaborated numerous times with every single one. And I know the council also understands there are separate missions and what they have accomplished and what they are striving to accomplish. So what we tried to do today is that we went to all the different service providers and asked them a few distinct questions. And then you will see that all of those partners here will follow the same kind of slide layout. And we asked them also a very question that we should never ask if we, because we will hear answers maybe we don't like. But we asked them the question also, what do you expect from us? And so I share with you, there will be some very good answers for forthcoming tonight. We initiated this, the special council meeting or the study session about homelessness because a few months back, I think about six or eight weeks ago, when we filed for an amendment for our plan at that time, council said, hey, why, why are we not allocating more funds towards homeless issues? Or why do we fund the Mr. Fix It program so strongly? And is there other, other, other ways how we can look at homelessness? And that triggered basically our thought as staff that it's time again to have this update and a calibration again of the organizations that support us and that we equally support them. And so that's, that's the general direction. Every service provider will give us their, their pitch or basically give us the answers pitches is absolutely the wrong word, but give us their, their presentation. And, and at the end of that, we will hopefully have a better insight in that. This is not a study session where we will find the solution or where we will find great answers to, to those large, large questions that we face day in and day out on the streets. But it is, it's basically a calibration of what we can do. And also we hope that the council can, over the next couple of weeks or months, let us know also, how do you want us as a city continue working with those organizations or what else are we missing? Because we hope that we learned tonight also a little bit what we are missing. So with that, Grant Leonard has, has this all organized. If it runs well, give credit to me. If it doesn't run well, we will put it all on Grant. So with that, I hand it over to Grant, please.
Thank you, Hans. Grant Leonard, housing analyst for the city of Monterey. Please present this special study session on homelessness to the council and the community. For a little bit of background, where we are at the state level and the local level. At the state level, as of 2020, the last time there was a good statewide census for homeless, there were 160,000 homeless individuals in the state. Locally, the Coalition of Homeless Service Providers is the lead agency for homeless services in Monterey County as well as San Benito County. They developed the five year plan to reduce homelessness, the Leave Me Home Plan. They coordinate services between the various nonprofits. And staff does attend their monthly board meetings as well as their housing pipeline meetings. Which is where we collectively work as staff from the cities and the nonprofits to identify projects that could increase housing, the housing supply and respond to homelessness. They also provide the point in time census of the homeless. And this is done every two years. The last census was done in 2019. The 2021 census was postponed due to COVID and was completed this January. And the numbers for 2021 will be released later this summer, or 2022, I'm sorry. Historically though, here are the numbers from the city of Monterey. 2015, 306 unsheltered homeless, the 31 sheltered homeless. And 2017 to 92. And 2019, it had gone down quite a bit to 167. But the sheltered population was already in between 2015 and 2017 of 37 sheltered homeless. So it is a problem that affects all California and affects the city of Monterey and communities throughout the county as well. Up next will be the city of Monterey Police Department to talk about our MDOT program.
Thank you, Grant, and good afternoon, Mayor and Council Chief Dave Holger with the Monterey Police Department. With me is Lieutenant Gabe Castor and Sergeant Rusty Jenkins. Rusty runs the day to day operations of the multi-disciplinary outreach team. So I'm going to hand it over to him to present the information to you.
Thank you, Chief. Now, our MDOT program is, the basis of it is to collaborate and also to build rapport, not only with the different social service providers, but also the unsheltered people that we deal with on a daily basis. Little background, back in 2015, we at the Monterey Police Department realized that there are quite a few different social service providers out there. And it was a little overwhelming for us to try to decipher all of them, if you will. Many of them have different clientele that they assist. So initially it started off with a, with a meeting, trying to get as many social service providers together in the same room as possible. That first meeting included three people. We had a meeting today, same type of meeting, and there were over 60 invitations that were given to different social service providers throughout the county, whether they be nonprofits or county social service providers, just been a few. But after that initial meeting in 2015, we took it a step further and we started having social workers riding police cars with us. And this was roughly 2016. So we started to evolve. That also proved to be very beneficial. It enabled us to get the social workers that we were building reports with out to the persons out on the street and tried to assist them directly, trying to pair the services with the person in need. And that led to the development of our MDOT program in 2018. And what that enabled us to do was provide desk space for different providers at our police department. Again, a great way for us to pair the services that folks need out in the community with the persons in need. Again, all about building that teamwork, that collaboration, and it's been very beneficial to us. And I think it's been very beneficial to the social service providers as well as the people that we're trying to help. As it stands right now, Grant, can you go to the next? Thank you. So these are the current entities that are part of our MDOT program. We have a representative from Adult Protective Services, from the Community Hospital of Monterey Peninsula, Monterey County Behavioral Health, a crisis worker, YWCA. They provide a social service provider for domestic violence and then interim and nation's finest. And each one of these different entities kind of specializes in a different set of clientele, if you will. For instance, nation's finest, those with veterans. Interim goes with those that are either experiencing homelessness or in, that are in fear of going into homelessness and have mental illness. And then Adult Protective Services obviously deals with those that are 60 and older. So we've tried to develop a wide variety of different persons to assist us so we can build that collaboration.
And with that, we'll hand it back off to Grant.
All right. Thanks so much. Next, I'll just go over quickly how the city funds public service agencies. As the council and the public know, every year we issue our community development block grants and they support a variety of services, everything from the food bank of Monterey County to legal services for seniors, but also really our targeted homeless services as well, things like Gathering for Women, Salvation Army, Community Human Services. We also are able to provide funding for projects through this program as well, including city park improvements, but also funding for homeless shelters or transitional housing. So here you see the table below includes funding since 2015. Our public service grants have been increasing from about $100,000 a year to 172,000 last year. And that's proposed for this coming year as well. So since 2015, over a million dollars have been distributed on public services through this program. And in terms of projects, we've delivered over $4 million with the Community Development Block Grant Program since 2015. That includes almost a million dollars for transitional housing with Veterans Transition Center and almost quarter million of dollars for repairs to the youth homeless shelter on Pearl Street operated by Community Human Services. We also use the public service funds here to support new homeless shelter, Casa de Noche Juana in Seaside. But that is a collaboration between Monterey County, Gathering for Women, and Community Human Services. Our challenge with this funding source is that it's very limited and also has HUD regulations that are very strict that we have to follow. So only 15% of our budget, for instance, can be spent on social services every year. So it is a valuable source of revenue or a source of funds for us, but it is a restricted fund. Next up, we'll enter into the speed dating portion of the presentation. We've invited the following agencies to present and they each have prepared two slides. So anticipate about five minutes or less per agency. And we'll go in order that they're listed here. So first up will be Robin McCray with Community Human Services. And I will be operating the PowerPoint, so just go ahead and tell me next slide when you're ready.
Thank you, Grant. Well, as Grant said, I'm Robin McCray. I'm the CEO of Community Human Services. I'm glad to be here this afternoon. Thank you very much for this opportunity. And thank you for your past funding and hopefully we'll be able to continue to collaborate with the city on many, many projects. We have an $8 million annual budget agency-wide, and that includes the city CVVG grant support. We operate four cities with four programs within the city of Monterey. Safe Place on Pearl Street, which houses the youth shelter. The Street Outreach Program, which is headquartered at Safe Place. The Safe Passage Transitional Housing Program, which is also on Pearl Street. And we are developing Schuman Heart House, which will be a maximum 35 bed emergency shelter for homeless, single women and families with children. We're in the capital development phase, but we're hoping to open in the summer of 2023. Other programs that we offer on the Monterey Peninsula include Genesis House in Seaside, a couple of sober living homes in Seaside. Family Service Centers in Seaside and Salinas that provide a broad variety of family safety net services. Outpatient drug treatment programs in Monterey and Salinas. Oh, we missed that one, Grant. There is an outpatient drug treatment program in Monterey. And the Off-Mane Clinic in Salinas, which offers medication assisted treatment to over 200 people every day. Next slide. So our current programs are working. Demand has been, never been greater unfortunately, and we've remained open all throughout the pandemic, providing services. We note that our clients' needs are much higher than they were a couple of years ago. With increased anxiety and stress and depression and increased drug and alcohol use, leading to more mental illness and more homelessness. What we would like to see is more transitional housing for youth, more permanent housing for youth, and some permanent sanitation stations for people who are unhoused. And something we'd like to recommend is that the city keep their eye on the Youth Homeless Demonstration Project that was recently awarded to the Coalition of Homeless Service Providers for our Continuum of Care, which encompasses also San Benito County. But this is important funding because it's earmarked specifically for homeless youth services, including housing. It's a tannamount to $5 million a year for two years, plus the eligible projects that come out of that program will be tucked into the annual demand or the annual renewal demand. So they could be, this could become ongoing funding for projects that are born out of this demonstration project money. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rob. Next up will be Gathering for Women. We have with us the Executive Director Stacy.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for inviting me to speak today. It's a pleasure to be with you and thank you for your past support of our programs. Gathering for Women in Monterey is the only day center of its kind on the Monterey Peninsula. We serve approximately 400 women each year. Majority of them are over 50. One of them that came in today is 79, recently homeless. We offer food, basic necessities like showers, clothing, case management and wraparound services. We also offer referrals to different organizations in the community like Interim and CESEAL. Our programs are an absolute necessity in order to help these women stay healthy while they're on their pathway to, to having housing in our community. Majority of them are citizens of our community long term. We also partner with Community Human Services with Casa de Noche Juana in Seaside. That's the Seaside, not Monterey. But we do have many women that are staying there trying to find housing. What we find the most need for is some sort of rent stabilization. A lot of our women come to us because they can no longer afford rent. They're on fixed incomes, either because they have a disability or they are elderly and have social security. Many of them are widows or separated from their spouses. We need more affordable housing generally and a look for the CESEAL system. And the things that we think that could be done, that we're hoping you will consider as a project home key in this, in this region. It's incredibly important and it is very, very successful at Salinas. And we'd like to consider a dedicated land for tiny homes or other sorts of housing. Again, appreciate you allowing me to present today. Thank you for all you do for our community.
Thank you, Stacy. Next up, we have Interim.
Hello, I'm Sophia Kieran. I'm the Grants and Contracts Manager for Interim. And we have Kevin Gast here, who is the Macomb Program Director. So we have a number of, we have a number of programs and not all of them are targeted towards the homeless. And our homeless funding is, it varies every year. So this is the funding for this current year, but some of this funding won't be renewed for next year. And I'll let Kevin explain what the Macomb Program does so that you have a sense of that.
Macomb serves adults who are homeless, who are experiencing a psychiatric disability or mental illness, such as schizophrenia or bipolar disorder. We do a variety of things, including helping people find their housing and then obtain documents like photo IDs, per certificates, you know, things that I think probably all the service providers do. By using example, we also help clients with their psychiatric symptoms while they're doing this thing. I use the example a lot of times, if somebody has schizophrenia, maybe they're paranoid about going to a government office. So we do a lot of coaching about managing your symptoms while you're at the DMV. So you can get your photo ID, which is often times needed to get housing. So it's kind of doing those two things at the same time. And we, yeah.
So we think our current programs are working and I'm sure as every other service provider would say, we wish there was more funding for the homeless, homeless population in the city of Monterey specifically. I think as Grant mentions, that funding is limited. What we're seeing is that there are no shelters for single men anywhere in Monterey County. We're having an issue with motels not taking our clients. Because I guess Kevin can explain more, but our clients, from my understanding, are more, more likely to use drugs now than ever before as they're causing havoc in those hotel rooms and our previous relationships have been ruined. And we have a need for more short-term housing, more supportive housing, which also involves more water credits and as Gathering for Women mentioned, we would love to see a project home key. And our understanding is that there is a city ordinance that restricts the movement of motels to affordable housing. So if that law can be changed somehow, perhaps the city can work on a project home key.
Okay, thank you so much. Do we have Carl Sodork on the line? Okay, well, I can present for Carl. Carl approached the city a couple of weeks ago with an interesting proposal. And first a little bit about the agency. It's the main provider of public transit throughout Monterey County. It's a $53 million budget. They have special programs like the rides program for the disabled, taxi vouchers, senior shuttles, and many more. And what Carl had shared with us is that he has seven 35 foot long buses or larger vehicles. Those recently been retired. They've met their useful life, useful service life. And normally those would just be scrapped or given away to a charity like I Help. However, he's come to find out that communities in California, Hawaii and London have been converting old buses into temporary shelters. You can install beds and even showers in them. They can even be used as temporary markets. So MST would be interested in donating those to a nonprofit or to a local agency. Who's interested in pursuing that as a project. And next up will be VTC, Veterans Transition Center.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kurt Shaki, the CEO of Veterans Transition Center. VTC has been operating for about a quarter century out in the old Fort Ord. We have federal and state funded housing programs that contribute to the problem of community homelessness. We are deemed restricted to handle veterans and their families with a mission to empower veterans to move from crisis to self-sufficiency. We have emergency housing, transitional housing, permanent housing, and We have emergency housing, transitional housing, permanent housing and aftercare programs. Our budget is about two million dollars a year for programs and the capital projects vary per year, but it's roughly a million dollars. And like others have said, we've been fully open every day, twenty-four hours during the pandemic. We are graded on bed days and on average, in the past two years, we've had over two thousand bed days per month in all of our programs. We're extremely grateful to the city of Monterey for supporting us with capital projects. And I'm proud to say that our permanent supportive housing that was funded by the city of Monterey is at a hundred percent capacity. And has been during the pandemic. We offer a full range of services. It's listed there. So they come in and we start with transportation and food. And when they leave, they get a full house of furniture and we move them into their new location. And to describe the range of services, we have our Program Director of our federal programs, Kristin Massey. If you'd flip the slide, please. Kristin?
Hi, I'm Kristin Massey. I'm the Program Director of Veterans Transition Center. Um, so our current programs, they're working. Um, we're almost full here at VTC, so that's, that's going well. Um, some of the things that are needed here, what, a big thing here is for substance abuse services. There's a lot of times when we have veterans who, you know, they may come out of other programs. And for, you know, with their mental health or their clinical, they, you know, start using substances again and. Referrals take a long time to get somebody into another program, whether that's FOR. Or um whether that's outpatient programs. And so a lot of times we're here, we're trying to work with these veterans. But sometimes they just need that higher level of care. Um, the other one is the aid and assisted living facilities. We're seeing a lot of elderly veterans. And there is one program and that's in Lodi and they are usually full. So we need more facilities that cater to elderly veterans. Um, so in our recommendations here, provide funding for transitional housing. And for inpatient and outpatient resources for clients with co-occurring disorders, which would be our veterans who are very clinical. And also with substance abuse issues.
Okay, excellent. I see Carl Sadork has joined us. Carl, would you like to go over your MST slide?
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm not sure if you can see me. I'm not seeing myself on the screen, so. Um, I'm assuming everything's working. But again, Carl Sadork, CEO for Monterey Transit District. Um, I uh was invited to this because uh MST. Uh, pretty much every year, uh, we have large and small vehicles that we retire. And uh, they're in various stages of operability. And when we retire these vehicles. They can go to an auction clearinghouse and we get very little revenue for these. We're talking, you know, uh. A few thousand dollars each. Uh, and these vehicles are twelve years old. They, they, they cost, you know, almost nearly a million dollars when we buy them new. Um, but by the end of their useful life, after twelve years or five hundred thousand miles. While still operable, they have very little resale value. Um, I have been watching over the past several years, groups in uh Oakland, San Francisco, Los Angeles, Hawaii. Uh, and even in uh South Carolina. Uh, taking uh buses that have been retired, whether they're school buses or transit buses. Uh, and converting those into uh showering facilities for uh homeless people. Or actual shelter facilities. And um MST has the ability through board policy, before we retire vehicles and take them off to auction. Um, we offer them to the local community uh where they may be used. And we've had everybody from um. Groups who are veteran support groups uh use these vehicles to transport their clients. To and from uh necessary occupational therapy or other uh needed services. We've had uh. Gang diversion programs, uh use our vehicles for their clients. And uh, we've had uh even the uh had vehicles in the past two years converted uh vehicles that we gave away. To groups of for things like uh mobile vaccine clinics, mobile vaccine testing. Uh, mobile vaccination clinics to go out into the actual fields where the farm workers are. So we have a group of uh seven full-size vehicles, four of which are drivable today. Uh, that we will be uh retiring and sending off to an auction facility. Unless we get a letter of a, a group of nonprofit. Our board has a policy that allows local nonprofits. Or cities uh to request a vehicle. And we will hold those vehicles back and uh basically do a transfer. Basically for a dollar, you will get a donated vehicle and we'll transfer title uh to you all. As is, no warranties expressed or implied. Uh, but we would be able to uh donate a vehicle to a local nonprofit. For whatever their purpose. I had sent this uh most recent notice out because I'd seen some articles. About vehicles being used for homeless shelter or homeless uh showering facilities. So that's all I have and thank you for your time.
Thanks, Carl. Yeah, please stay around when we get to the questions section.
Great.
Okay, we're going to close our public service providers presentation with United Way. Um, because they provide such wonderful array of programs. And with us today is their Executive Director, David Castagna.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for the invitation and the opportunity to participate. Um, I was a little surprised, I have to say, to be uh invited to a panel on homeless services. Because we've been really focusing on um prevention. And obviously, the great services that have been um described here are um very intense and needed and, and incredibly well-run. But I think our, our, our collective end game is around prevention and making sure that people don't need those services and keeping them in their homes. So I'm happy to just share with you a few things that United Way has been up to related to that. Um, and uh, it was interesting you asked for our budget. Um, to say that we're a twenty-five million dollar organization is something very new to us. I think of us as a three million dollar organization that is administering. A very large COVID relief grant uh related to housing and that's the Emergency Rental Assistance Program that has um really. Uh, inflated the uh, the dollars that we are able to distribute. Um, but I'll get back to that as far as what that means for our community. Because we, we've had a very unique opportunity to provide help in keeping people housed. Um, the programs that we're currently involved in directly related to this area have to do with the uh. Federal Emergency Food and Shelter Program. We administer, um, it's been about a million dollars um from the federal government. Um, to local organizations to provide um. Uh, basic needs and safety net types of services, specifically um rent and food assistance. Um, and uh, emergency shelter and so forth. Um, last year that helped uh over fifty-four thousand people. Um, you are, I, I'm sure all aware of our two-one-one information and referral service. And I want to thank the city for its um longstanding and um very important support of the two-one-one service. Last year, we fielded over thirty-three thousand inquiries um and helped people connect with help. Um, over seven thousand of those were from peninsula residents. And actually, I just pulled the numbers, city of Monterey residents, over twenty-five hundred people called uh two-one-one for help. Um, a lot of that had to do with COVID health issues, both vaccination and testing. Um, and really though, the bulk has to do with housing-related issues, rental assistance, emergency shelter. And um utility assistance. So we know the needs are there and um, and. And specifically, we can trace them to your particular jurisdiction as well as the rest of our county. Um, the Emergency Rent Assistance Program that we administer um during the calendar year twenty twenty-one. Over nearly thirty-five hundred individual households were served through that program. Um, and uh, that was, going back to the, the large numbers. Um, that was twenty-six million dollars in aid that we were able to distribute um. Uh, to those households. And the goal of that was to address the arrears that people may have accumulated during COVID nineteen. And the uh economic impact and um. Bring people up to, to, uh, to date, make them whole so that going forward, they are not at risk of homelessness. So that program in particular is really geared to keeping people housed. And um, and making sure that they didn't fall behind during the pandemic. I think you can go to the next slide. Thank you. Um, again, a shout out to the city of Monterey. You really played a big part in helping us create a system of networked providers who can coordinate in service delivery. The city of Monterey was our first partner with rental assistance and that continued to evolve. We built that on the infrastructure of our Active Referral Network, which is a collection of agency. Partners that meet regularly, refer clients back and forth. Um, and use a software platform to facilitate that. Um, so that um clients uh can have, the idea is, is a one open door and then they're referred to different partners for various services. And that is related to and connected to our two-on-one resource database. We feel that that's the future and, and really that's what uh United Way's distinct role is in our community, I feel. Is to provide that coordination of partners, knowing that we, no one organization can um. Take on these large issues uh independently and that we do need to look at various ways to work together. So that idea of, of an active referral network is something we're really excited about and continue to evolve. We also were uh in a position to be able to uh distribute pandemic relief of various sorts. Uh, different kinds of cash aid in addition to the rent and utility assistance. Um, that was really a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, I think, for all of our communities to have large infusions of, of uh government support. Um, but we know that uh we, we had a, a housing problem and crisis before the pandemic and it certainly hasn't gotten any better. So um, knowing very specifically what we continue to need, more shelter beds and affordable housing. And when we talk about affordable housing, it's really looking at that differential between rents and the jobs and wages. That exist in our community and really looking at how we can have a sustainable uh economy. With um how, housing of various forms um that uh are serving the workforce that we want to have. Um, uh for our community. Um, we also need, and going back to that idea of being a network coordinator. We need um to continue to improve ways that we connect clients with services. So that idea of system navigation is, is extremely important. And um, and really uh when we think about how you provide these supports. Um, understanding we need to respect the um, the goals and aspirations and independence of. The community members we're trying to serve. And we know that there are many different perspectives and, and experiences that people have. Um, and um, there's no, there's no one size that fits all. So I'm just, again, thrilled to be part of a panel of. Of, of a very diverse set of providers and be working with them in, in various ways. But I think um as a community, my message would be that um we need to continue to, to look at ways to help people navigate. The systems that we have in place currently. And then mostly, uh, you know, long-term, look at. Prevention in the form of how do we think about our housing supply? How do we stabilize rents? How do we um make sure that we have a healthy uh economy? With various um housing options and support services for the people that live here. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, so just to wrap it up before going to questions, um obviously homelessness is a long-running problem. It's a challenging and very complex issue to address, often individualized. Um, so there's no clear-cut cookie cutter answers. Uh, the city does provide homeless services through our MDOT and our CBVG programs. And you just heard an array of the wonderful programs that are offered by our public service providers. Um, and then of course, the underlying issues of needing more shelters, more housing, more transitional housing. And funding for services that are needed. And with that, uh, we can break to questions.
All right. Uh, thank you, Grant. Hans, did you have any final words uh at this point before we go to the next part of our meeting?
Uh, no, I, I do not. Um, uh, again, um, this, I think it was important for us to, to. Uh, hear from the service providers to hear what they were doing. Uh, each and every one of them has a slightly different mission. Uh, the combination of all of that provides a, 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 a ray of services. And uh, as, as you've heard, there are quite a number of wishes still out there that, 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 that we have to satisfy over the next couple of years. And part of that initial meeting or the, the initial uh. Uh, work that we will do was to hear that feedback because that will determine how we are planning our. Uh, future allocation of, of funding from the city through CBVG.
Hey, good. Thanks, Hans. And I'm, I'm sure the council agrees with me in that the, the presentations were very inspiring. And you follow directions so well. I was very impressed in that you told us about programs that work. Your, your ongoing successes and also what some of the challenges are and how the city of Monterey might uh help with the challenges and. And the list of things that you are doing and aspiring for. And my thought is, council, if you don't mind, I would suggest we go to any public comments. So we have all of the input in one package. Then we could come back to the council for your thoughts and direction moving forward. Does that sound okay? Or do you, does that sound a good way to go? I see a lot of yeses and so on. Okay, that's, I think when we have a presentation, this is a little bit different than a public hearing. Where we have a decision to be made. So I'd be really interested to get a public reaction and some of their input. And I'm sure our very uh honorable providers and city staff would like to hear what's on the minds of the public as well. So this is a good time to focus us on this topic. So Clementine, do we have some folks who'd like to share some thoughts with us? And we'll come back to the council for questions and some thoughts going forward.
Yes, we sure do. First, I will call on Sonia. Sonia, please go ahead.
Hi, yes. Uh-huh. Hi, good, good evening. How are you?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, so really quick, I just had a question. I wanted to um find out, my name is Sonia Villalobos. I currently live in Salinas and I um teach for Clorico in Seaside. And I also um lived in Monterey. I'm a former um resident from Monterey. I myself went through some homelessness and um I will probably be faced with homelessness again. I did um get a voucher for a three-bedroom house and my house, my home has gotten smaller with the kids. Uh, my voucher um went up to um, I believe it was two thousand eight hundred. This is, I know it's personal, but I'm just want to know because now if I qualify only for a two-bedroom house. How does one get into a two-bedroom house or apartment when the, in, what is it called? The inflammation or the um, you know, how everything went skyrocketing high? Um, you know, now they want two thousand eight hundred for a two-bedroom apartment. So we can't find anything. And then a lot of people don't take the Section Eight voucher. So it makes it hard. So once again, with our family, we're facing homelessness. I teach for Clorico. A lot of the kids that are residents from Monterey Seaside area are faced with homelessness. Some of the parents are staying back here in the tents in Chinatown. And I have their children that I teach for free in the city of Seaside. It all started with my mom thirty years ago. Um, my other question is, where do we get all this beautiful information that you guys make it sound really good and I love it, United Way, all this stuff? But when we call two-one-one, we don't get all this information. I just got finished housing four kids that took a seven months that were staying in a car abandoned by their parents. Which I personally knew from Monterey area and Seaside area. Um, the youngest kid was six and the oldest kid was eighteen. It was very hard to get them, you know, housed until I literally had to call CRLA every day and ask them, you know, like, what can we do about these kids? Like, they're staying in a car. There's nobody, you know, um, you know, watching over them. CPS went to them. They're fine because they have an eighteen-year-old that's watching them. This is, it's getting insane, you know? And then um, another thing is um. This is, it's getting insane, you know? And then, um, another thing is, um, gosh, there's so much, but I only have three minutes. Um, yeah, and I wanted to find out where, you know, we can find out about these programs. And also, the rents are really high. The voucher is a joke right now. I'm just like looking at it and I'm like, I'm gonna lose my voucher because I can't find anything, um, that's a two-bedroom house. Although it's, uh, my husband, uh, myself, my seventeen-year-old son, as well as my daughter. And also, we need to do something about addiction. My son just, um, seen two of his very best friends, fifteen and fourteen, that overdosed with addiction. So we got a serious problem and we got really great people that wanna work on it. A lot of my parents from Clorico are working two jobs. They don't get to see what their kids are doing because they're working two jobs just to make rent. So this, we got a real crisis on us and we wanna fix it before it looks like LA or San Francisco. It's getting bad. And we got people that care here. Oh, that was good.
Thank you, Sonia.
Yes. Hi, Mr. Overston.
Uh, Clementine, before you go on to the, the, the next speaker, uh, Sonia had a couple of questions. One, which was, we referenced Section Eight vouchers. And her second one was, how can she find out more about the great programs that were shared this evening? And my initial thought would be if Sonia would, um, probably wanna email the city, uh, suggest@monterey.org or perhaps contact Grant, who would be Leonard@monterey.org, I believe. Right, Grant?
That's correct.
Yes, because I think that the questions she asked are probably very specific. But that way, uh, we can connect with Sonia without having all of these contexts going public because we wanna respect everybody's privacy. Then when we come back after the other public comment, if people have, uh, thoughts about Sonia's two points, which were the vouchers and, um, how to find out more about these programs, uh, we, we can go further on that. So Clementine, back to you, please. I just, I, I thought those were two points we wanna make sure we get answered. So who else would like to share with us?
Thank you. Next, let's go from Esther Malkin. Esther, go ahead.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, Esther Malkin, I usually come to you wearing my, uh, advocate hat for Renters United, but I'm coming today to speak about, um, this issue. Having been on the board of the Housing Resource Center of Monterey County, as well as having worked with Katie from United Way, um, for quite a while on these issues. I'm glad that Sonia turned out. Um, she's a former student of the mayor's. And the last time she came to a council meeting and spoke, she was on, um, the verge of, uh, she was homeless, actually had been for a while. And it was due to my connecting her to, uh, Congressman Panetta's office that they were able to get into the house they're in now. And unfortunately, I'm very, um, sad to hear that they're on the verge of losing that housing. But anyway, that, uh, I wanna first and foremost thank all these nonprofits for the good work and hard work that they do. It's, it's really important work. I also want to thank the police department because Monterey Police Department has always been ahead of our homeless issue and the mental crises, um, of, of regarding, uh, the homeless people. I personally have witnessed them many times dealing with these homeless people with dignity and respect that they deserve. And they are a model for what other police departments can do. Uh, I wanna speak to you guys specifically about the, the unfortunate connection between the homelessness that we have, that has been increasing over the last decade, as, as connected to the unaffordable rents that we've had to, to deal with. There, there's no way that we are going to be able to fund all of you for this great work you're doing while we're not preventing more people from becoming homeless. It's important that we, that those of you that are working on it, join Katie on the prevention side of it. And the prevention can't just be with these CDBG funds because they exclude many, many residents that need help as well, but supposedly make too much to qualify. We need a number of things to work on to make the prevention happen, which is protection of pol, uh, of renters. We need preservation of existing units that are affordable and, and keep them that way. And, and we need production. But until we can get that production, we cannot wait around and have rents go up ten percent every year under the bill that's going to expire in eight years because nobody, including yourselves as homeowners, have a way of earning ten percent more income. Thank you.
Right. Next, we have, um, not sure how to pronounce it. Coco Bien? Coco Bien, please go ahead.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. It's Karen O'Neill calling in. And I've worked, um, you know, in this housing situation for probably four years here locally in Monterey. And I just read it's kind of staggering statistic here with the, um, uh, current economy and so forth and with COVID and all of this for two years, that they're now saying that sixty-four percent of the middle class, so we're not talking low income here, but sixty-four percent are now literally living paycheck to paycheck. If I take Monterey's population, approximately twenty-eight thousand, break out the number of children under eighteen, we can assume that we're coming up with a number close to twenty-three of those. Sixty-four percent are now paycheck to paycheck. That means about fifteen thousand residents in the city are barely making it. Now, whether that's one person, two people, three people. And it's kind of staggering when you talk about homelessness because I also researched today apartments available on the peninsula and rates. One-bedrooms are at least two thousand or more. I've seen them two to twenty-five and that's checking three rental agencies. If in fact, you have to leave because you've been told you have to for renovation or, uh, owner's niece is gonna move in or whatever, minimally, you're looking at first-last, uh, cost of moving, perhaps security. And it would be a five-thousand-dollar move on a simple one-bedroom apartment. Now, if you're living paycheck to paycheck, somebody explain to me how you're gonna do that. So right now, we have a situation where we definitely need, and as far as I'm concerned, require some form of rent stabilization and some kind of fairness, uh, from property owners, property managers and so forth, in order to ensure that we don't have fifteen thousand people winding up needing mental health services and free food. And that's kind of where we're at. Things are not gonna get better, in my opinion, for twenty-two or twenty-three. So for all of you that are working with homelessness, you really have to pay attention to the current rental situation in Monterey and what is really happening here. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Karen. And next, we have Paula. Hello? Paula, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I wanna also thank all the people in these various agencies and for the work they do. I know how difficult it is. I've been an administrator of the Ingram Housing Fund for well over a decade and it's very, very difficult with limited funds to do the work that is so vast. And I also wanna specifically thank Katie from United Way for, um, highlighting one of the largest issues, which has to do with the unaffordable, unaffordable rents and Esther as well and the other subsequent speakers. So I regularly have to go out and look at statistics and do forecasts having to do with rents in my area. And as I also serve as a head of a tenants association. And so I follow the HUD market studies, the fair market studies, and I trend it. And so over the last three years, twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, and twenty-twenty-one, the rents in our area in Monterey County have gone up twenty-eight point three-eight percent. That is the trend. And at the same time, CPI has only gone up a total of eight percent for those same three years. So that is a complete mismatch when you have property owners, whether they're corporations, mom and pops, or smaller property owners suggesting that they need to do this in order to cover costs because their costs are not that. That's a very, um, unequitable relationship between the two. Similarly, consumer price indices are used to give people raises in their pay, which not everyone gets. And, um, so there's all, there's gonna be a consistent mismatch and a widening and widening gap. So what I would like to remind the council of and any other official who has authority is that your fidelity is first to your constituency. And although your constituency may include those businesses, it may include your campaign supporters and may include your campaign contributors, your constituency is over half renters in your jurisdiction. And that is who your fidelity is owed to. And so you must take this into consideration. You must begin to look at rent stabilization, perhaps with rollbacks, uh, always with vacancy control. Uh, and you, you need to be mindful of that because that is a matter of preventing homelessness. And as one person pointed out, not just for the very low and low income, but for working-class families, people of middle incomes, this is a disaster. It's not happening in slow motion. It's happening right now and it's only gonna get worse. The, uh, current legislation, I think, as Esther Malkin may have pointed out, fourteen eighty-two, will be expiring. But it, it allows for a ten percent increase, um, every year for the next eight years. People cannot afford that. People will be homeless and our needs are going to be much larger than any of these agencies can meet. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kent Glensor.
Hi, thanks. Um, I really appreciate, um, that the city council is, um, doing this, um, study session. And I, I, I just wanted to also really thank Ms. Castagna. Um, in one of her bullet points in her presentation, she actually talked about wages, which was amazing. Um, the private sector here, the nonprofit sector and the public sector, um, appear to be exporting this idea or this problem to everybody else. And I believe that the city council of Monterey can't solve that problem, but can exhibit more leadership in terms of, um, creating a climate and an atmosphere, and in fact, incentives for public, private, and nonprofit organizations in the city of Monterey to actually pay people a living wage. Whether rent control or rent caps are a good idea or not, that's not my area of expertise. However, if employers are not paying people a living wage, which means no more than thirty percent of their income should be going towards rent, then we have a deep problem and I would like to call out employers to do more. Thank you.
And, uh, we've got a phone caller with the last three digits, nine zero two. Please go ahead.
Hi. Yes, thank you. This is Nina Beatty. I agree with, um, the previous speaker that said this is a disaster. I try to help, um, a number of individuals with housing and it's a very, very difficult situation. And to watch their faces turn pale or to start, break out in a sweat as they anticipate, whether they can pay the rent, um, whether they'll be able to, you know, keep a roof over their, um, home heads and their family's heads, um, and as they scramble to find income that can pay the rent. This is a catastrophe. Um, and this, uh, one thing that I did not hear mentioned tonight, and I appreciate all the providers that talked about their programs. Um, it, there's some excellent work that's going on here in Monterey. I did not hear anything specifically for hospitality workers. This has been mentioned in the city before. But, um, though there have been different groups that have been singled out for assistance, hospitality workers are at high risk of homelessness during the off-season. And there's nothing that I know of that's available for these workers to give them stable housing. Um, I think the idea of that keeping, this is a continuum. It starts with having no affordable housing. It starts with having and goes on to, um, high rents. It, it's, um, there, this rent stabilization and the keeping people in their homes, preventing homelessness is absolutely key. Um, a homebuyer assistance program, the Fix-It Program that's in the city, um, and rent control. The idea of Project Home Key, that, uh, it's Salinas is just breaking huge ground with regard to this. It's essential for here. Um, I'm, I, I need to call out that there's been just a complete lack of help from Sacramento. The housing bills, the accessory dwelling unit, the, uh, lots, splits, all those things signed by Stone, Laird, Monning, and Newsom, uh, they don't have any mandate for affordable housing. And this is shocking because it's not just Monterey. It's in the Bay Area. It's all over the place where there's not enough, um, homes for people that are affordable. And to move people from a rental situation into a home-buying situation so they have a secure roof over their head and they're not at the whim of, of landlords, um, that, it has to be addressed, too. The military impact on housing and homelessness in this community, driving up rents, driving up home prices. That has to be, um, part of this factored into this equation. Um, and also that renters don't have rights in Monterey like homeowners do, like property owners do. Um, that's all part of this equation of not treating renters with the respect that they're entitled to as, as fellow human beings. Um, and they have to be given the same rights that property owners do in terms of noticing, um, by, um, by the city council and the planning commission when their hearings and their land use projects near them. They need to be part, uh, central to all of this because they are probably the most vulnerable, far more vulnerable than homeowners in many ways. Um, the fifteen thousand people living paycheck to paycheck is disastrous.
Thank you, Ms. Beatty. And, uh, we do not have any further hands raised at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Clementine, for managing that. And we always appreciate, uh, the public comment. We had several people who, who speak to us regularly and they really do follow these issues quite well. So we, we appreciate them. And at this point, we wanted to, the staff and our providers, uh, probably would like to hear from the council talking about, uh, what's going well, what, uh, what we may be looking at in the future and ways to further the good work that's going on. So one of our council members liked to start off with the understanding, we, we have to go to six o'clock and we do have closed session. Not that I'm trying to cut you off, but, uh, we'd love to hear from Councilmember Dan.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, again, like most of our speakers, I'd like to thank our service providers for all of the things that they do for our, our community because obviously we all have to look after each other. And I think that, um, that your services do that for all of us and, and we really appreciate that. I, I just have a couple of questions, Mayor, uh, if you don't mind. Um, I, I wanted to start with Grant. Uh, I, I'm curious, um, if we have a hundred and sixty-seven, uh, unsheltered homeless, that's in two thousand nineteen, and we have, um, thirty-seven that are sheltered. I'm assuming that is because the staff report kind of hasn't reversed. Um, how many beds do we actually have in the city of Monterey to emergency bed, beds, uh, to help the, the hundred and sixty-seven that we have? Do, do we, do we have that number, Grant?
You know, I think all of our shelter beds are operated by community human services, um, with the use shelter. But then we also have, um, interamink that provides emergency assistance as well. So I don't have the exact number off the top of my head. Um, our service providers can chime in with their numbers if they know.
Our, our beds, Dan, are normally twelve beds for homeless youth eighteen to twenty-four. Under COVID, we're operating at a slightly reduced capacity of eight beds. I guess that's not too slight. Um, and the new project that we're hoping to open in twenty-three will provide up to thirty-five more depending on the number of children in the family and the ages of the children.
Well, thank you, Robin. Thank, thank you for, for sheltering our youth, especially on the peninsula. I know as a former teacher, um, I, I know I've seen families with, with children that come to schools um, that, uh, that, uh, their homes are moving around in cars, which, which I hate to see. Uh, and they do really well in school, by the way, at least the ones that I've, I've talked to. But, um, uh, about the Schuman, is it Schuman-Hart House that's coming up? Where, where is that located?
Uh, we purchased the building at six hundred East Franklin Street, which is the, uh, the Marie.
That's the dance studio, correct?
Yes.
Oh, good. And, and when is that planning on opening up? When, when is the date?
We're looking right now at the summer of twenty twenty-three.
That's great. Wonderful. Thank you, Robin. Uh, then, then I have one other question, Mayor, and this is for Chief Hober. Uh, do we, are, are we the only, um, police, uh, department that has? Uh, do we, are, are we the only um police uh department that has similar to or, or um M dot, um, are we the only ones that have that? Or do our other, is that modeled after another um, another city?
No, I, I believe there's other uh entities throughout the country that have similar models. Um, but ours was kind of specific to Monterey with the folks that we were working with. Came out of the idea um with county crisis social workers um that we were working with. I know the city of Watsonville has something similar, but ours is tailored um kind of specifically to Monterey County, but it's an idea that others use as well.
Mr. Hober, our, our chief Hober, are we the, um, do, do we share those services with other cities? Um, Pacific Grove, Carmel, um, Seaside, or do we work with them?
Absolutely. So if, if they uh have need for that, then certainly we assist the crisis workers I was just talking about. There's one on the peninsula, one in Lena's and one in South County. So yeah, all of those groups share uh different resources.
Okay, thank, thank you, Chief Hober. Uh, that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Dan. And other council member, Councilmember Allen, please.
You know, first I just want to express my appreciation to um all of the nonprofit providers and to um other good nonprofit providers who are not here as well um and to the city because we have uh, we've really tried to do what we can to support uh this important work. But um obviously there's a lot more work to be done. And I think the point that um some are trying to make, which is the connection between the lack of housing that's affordable relative to the wages that people earn here is, is the major problem. If you go back and you look at the homeless census uh counts, you go back to, I believe it's two thousand and seven, we had about seven or eight hundred in Monterey County. Then in two thousand and nine, it ballooned. It went up three hundred percent to like twenty-four hundred. And it's pretty much been there in the range of twenty-four hundred to twenty-six hundred ever since two thousand and nine. Well, what happened? We had the banks um foreclosing on homeowners after giving them really loans that they should not have given them in the first place. And we had people displaced. And once people get displaced, it becomes very difficult for them to get back. So we've been making progress, I think, and we've heard, heard about that progress from the um, from the nonprofits and we need to keep doing that. But we do need to address that differential between weight, the average wages i- in Monterey um for many of our workers and the growing cost of housing. I was a little bit shocked to hear, I think Paula Pellot said rents, average rents have gone up twenty-eight percent over the last three years. Obviously, even with high inflation, that's way above inflation. Um, so I guess I'll just close up by saying what I heard from the providers is we need more transitional housing and we also need more permanent affordable housing. And when I talk to, to, to nonprofits that are trying to help place people, you talk to our M dot officers, the biggest problem is you can refer folks, but there's no beds and, and housing. And uh that, that is the bottom line. There's just not enough housing to put people in. And yes, there are conflating issues like addiction and mental health, some of which are created by simply being homeless. But I think we really need to do that and we also need to address rent stabilization so that, so that we don't see the number of homeless persons growing even more. Um, the idea of the buses is intriguing. Uh, I appreciate the creative thinking. I'd need a lot more, I guess, information about how this has worked. I'm a little bit skeptical that that's the best place to be putting resources. It seems kind of substandard. Um, I, I don't think we really want people sleeping in buses. That doesn't seem the best to me. Um, so, and I'll also just mention one other nonprofit that does work with car homeless. Um, the One Starfish Program, they do a great job. Oh, and then finally, I, I need to mention for Community Human Services, we had a report on our shelter in Seaside Casa de Noche Buena that, um, and Robin can correct me. I believe we had something like, we've had something like maybe sixty or seventy clients over the last year. And we've managed to place in permanent housing over twenty of them, which is really good. I could be wrong on those exact numbers, so Robin, jump in here after I'm done. But um, but we actually have a waiting list of over two hundred. Okay, so at any given time, our capacity at that shelter, well, with COVID, it's a little bit less, but you know, twenty to thirty people, ten times that number of women and families alone, we're not even talking about men, need um, need help. So we are hoping to open Schuman Hart House in Monterey next year. We do need um assistance with that in terms of generating the monies. Uh, we're applying for help from the state. Um, and it might be helpful if the city sent a letter of support. So that's something I'd like to kind of put on the table. Um, we could put, we could send a letter, it would mean a lot to the state and the Senator Laird if he knows that the city of Monterey is behind that project. So um I'll just end with that and thank you all for the work you're doing.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Who would like to go next? Councilmember Tyler?
Well, we're waiting. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Robin.
I just wondered if Alan, if you did want me to comment?
Yeah, please do, Robin. You had some specific numbers Alan asked for.
I, I have a percentage. We serve sixty-one people. Um, and there were, I, I want to say thirty-four exitters. And of those exitters, uh sixty-eight percent went to permanent or transitional housing. And of those, I think it was thirty-four people, um, only three of them went to transitional. The other thirty-one went to permanent. So that's a pretty good outcome, even given the limited housing that's available. Uh, we hustled really hard to find uh, to, to find landlords that would accept the vouchers at their values and provided a lot of rapid rehousing support to make those connections happen.
Thank you, Robin. Councilmember Tyler?
Yeah, so I just want to echo um their appreciation. And, and I know that um things can go on to deaf ears because there's um, there could be a, a lack of um kind of true empathy and understanding what it is that you all go, go through day in and day out. I mean, you truly are on the front lines dealing with these issues that frankly, in a lot of ways, um, it's a lack of, or, or failure of um our government stepping in and finding a space to really solve some of these really challenging issues. So I just really appreciate the work that you all do and being partners and with us um to, to try to help fill this gap as best as possible. Um, I, I appreciated the comments in regards to um wages, um both from our service providers and from the public. I think that I, and I, and I'm putting this to my colleagues on the council. Um, it, something that was brought up today and we've talked about in the past um is this idea of rent stabilization. And I wondered if there's still space for us to even have that conversation with this council. Um, but at the very least, if we're not willing to go there, then maybe an alternative approach is having a conversation around what a living wage looks like. And I know that that might elicit a response initially around how do we do that, particularly with small businesses that are struggling and we're hearing these conversations around inflation. But I think that there's um a, a space for us to actually engage in a conversation there. So I just put that out and I, and I, and I, I ask us to see if that would be something that we'd be willing to consider. I, I've talked to Professor Glensor uh in a conversation on the side and, and with a program that he's working on or working through. Um, it works with employers on trying to slowly increase that up to a living wage over time so it's not a dramatic increase. And it seems to be effective in the places that have implemented it. So I, I just kind of want to put that out here because it does go into this whole larger conversation around subsidized housing. And, and if people are getting paid a living wage, we wouldn't need to be having this conversation around creating a ton of subsidized housing that is very um expensive and how do we find the funding to do that? Um, so I, I just want to appreciate that and hopefully we can engage deeper there. Um, and of course, it does go into this whole conversation around affordable housing and rent. So if, if we are trying to address this issue of homelessness, um, we're not going to be able to fully address it if we don't find a way of stopping people from becoming homeless in the first place. And I think several of the, of the service providers identified that as an issue. Um, and so I think it's important for us to keep that in mind as we're having these conversations. Um, I, I'm going to ask a few questions to some of the service providers here in a second, but I'm, 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 in addition to this, to the questions that I might ask specifically to you all, I'm also wondering if you all could speak, whether it's by a straw poll or, or maybe you want to elaborate a little bit more around the idea of Housing First. I didn't hear it really brought up today. Um, I found it to be very successful um when they implemented it in Utah. And I've, I've heard since that it's failed, but I think that's due to the state legislature and reallocating the funding that was established for um the Housing First model. And I've talked to other home, uh, homeless service providers in other regions and they seem to be very much championing that idea. So I'm, I'm wondering how people feel about that. Um, so when I go around in a second with some questions, if, if you wouldn't mind, I'm sharing your thoughts on that. I also heard several service providers bring up this idea of funding. So of course, funding is going to be an issue. I know that CDBG is a conversation that, you know, is within our grasp now that we can really try to leverage that in a way that provides funding in the appropriate way. Um, but I think that there's a space for us to potentially be able to do more. Um, and so I just wanted to highlight that as an issue that funding um is very preventative. And then that does tie to one of the questions I'm going to ask to Robin. But before I do that, I also want to highlight that I've heard several um of you bring up Project Home Key and if the city is willing to consider that. So I, I, I first actually want to pass, pass it to staff with the question around Project Home Key, around what that potential looks like for us. Um, and is it realistic for us to um to, to find an avenue to leverage that state funding that could really help address a lot of the issues in relation to the beds being available in the city of Monterey?
Sure, happy to answer that. Project Home Key is a state program um that provides funding to local cities to purchase uh dilapidated, underused hotels, motels or apartment buildings uh to be then converted into permanent or transitional housing for homeless. It started first as Project Home Key during COVID nineteen in an effort to house the homeless. And then it evolved in Project um, Project Room Key, I'm sorry, and then it evolved in Project Home Key. Uh, we have talked about it here at the city, although on this, I think I'll pass to Kim or to Hans. There is an existing ordinance which prohibits uh the conversion of visitor-serving facilities like hotels and motels. And um the alternative to that is to purchase an existing apartment building, but then you're just displacing one group of uh renters for transitional housing. So um Kim, I'm sure you'll elaborate more on that.
Um, I think, you know, just lessons learned looking at other communities that have pursued this program. If the city council was interested in this program, I think the first step would be for the city council to authorize a letter to the various hotels and motels to see if any of them would be interested in this program. Um, and potentially selling to, um, usually it's a, 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 another group that would purchase the property. Um, if they were interested, there's a process we could possibly, we could pursue um to look at the zoning issues as well as the ultimate acquisition. So for me, the first um step would be transparency, working with the hotel and motel owners in the city of Monterey to see if anybody's interested. If they're not, um, the other option is to look at an existing apartment buildings. But I don't think at the staff level, we've thought that's a positive approach because you would be putting somebody out of housing to create a, a new housing opportunity. And then obviously, our biggest constraint is we need water to be able to construct new housing in the city of Monterey. So that's how I see, if the council wants to pursue that, we would potentially send a letter to hotel and motel operators in the city to see if they're interested in selling their property.
And, and the conversion of a hotel or a motel that already has water credits, would it require additional water credits if they were actually all being used? I'm not quite sure exactly the difference in a hotel room versus a, a room that's used for a living.
It's a good question. I think I, to give you a real concrete, because it would be almost like a single room occupancy type situation. Um, we would need to report back to you and work with the water district on the water credit. My, my gut sense is, is that we would be okay in terms of water credits. Um, I think there's a reasonable argument there with the, the water district that going, transitioning from a hotel to single room occupancy could um possibly be enough water credits.
Okay, well, I, I'm in support of a letter. I'm not sure how my colleagues feel about that, but I think it's something at least worth, worth pursuing. Um, the worst that we can say in the end is, is no, but I think trying to find a site that might be willing to do it and putting a letter out, I don't think can hurt. So I would just throw that out. Um, moving from there, um, I do want to jump back to, to Robin. During your presentation, you were identifying how um you needed more. And, and I'm just wondering how much is more, particularly in regards to transitional permanent housing for youth?
That's a great question. I mean, uh, it, it, we probably could use um more than I'm going to say, but currently we have one house and there are six transitional um housing beds. So that's the extent of the transitional housing for homeless age, for a transition age homeless youth. Um, and we would be open right now, you know, we kind of got a lot on our plate with Schuman Hart House. But over the last couple of years, we've been, you know, the staff has been looking at uh options like a master leasing property and then subletting to um the transition age youth. So it doesn't necessarily take a purchase, it could be a master lease. Um, and if we have the, you know, both the staff resources and the um financial resources to do it, we could do kind of a little mini enterprise where we master lease numerous um houses for that purpose. And, and that might even be something, um, we're, we're listening very closely to what the transition age youth want that are part of the um youth advisory board, uh, and which is part of the continuum of cares requirement that we hear youth voices and planning our services and housing. And um so I, I think they're preferring um non-congregate as much as possible and scattered site, which would mean not having a big hotel, but having numerous master lease smaller properties.
Okay, and then quickly, any thoughts on Housing First?
Yeah, I, I, it works for us over at Casa de Noche Buena and I think it's the national model that HUD would like everyone to aspire to. I do know there are some providers, because of their special target populations, that have a really difficult time with that. But there's a lot of destruction that goes on in some of those um units. But um, but I do think it's the national model that HUD prefers and it's working for us. And I know other providers where it's working as well.
I, I would love to go into some of these conversations deeper because this is such a, there's so much to this conversation, but for the sake of time, I'm going to move on. Thank you for your responses. Um, Stacy, you had mentioned um rent stabilization. And I just wonder specifically, is there something specific to the homeless community that you're referring to? Are you, are, are you referring to rent stabilization in general?
In general, just an observation that we're seeing an increase of people who are really on the, on the edges of losing their housing, which is one, one thing. If it's a, a, a health bill or um recently I had someone who had not been able to pay their utilities um and that may force them to be homeless. Uh, I think that, that as several speakers, including from the community, said, um, there are so many people in our area that are just on that, on that brink and it will take one, one small thing, push them over the edge. And I think Katie spoke for that as well, to just generally, not, not specific to our, our population.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't see Kurt on here anymore. Is anybody here from VTC still? I think they dropped off. Okay, um, and then Katie, if I could jump to you. Um, you were talking about improving ways to connect um clients to services. Um, that's a really interesting topic and I think a way of figuring out what, how, what you all do with two-on-one. Um, is there any thoughts behind exactly what that would look like in regards to moving in that direction?
Uh, thank you for the question.
I mean, we have, we have the information. Um, and and two-on-one, you know, by definition provides referral um, information. I think the next level is how to how to make sure somebody can use that information and engage with or enroll in the service they need. Um, we also know that people, that agencies are overwhelmed. We have, you know, there's a staffing crisis. Um, certainly I can speak for the nonprofit sector. Um, I will speak, you know, from the perspective of United Way with the Emergency Rental and Utility Assistance Program. What I, we're seeing a lot more direct service calls coming to us. And if I could wave a magic wand, I would love to add um, social workers and case managers to our front line. And um, you know, many of the partners here have that as part of their business model, and I think all of us could use more. Um, that, a- and with the idea that we're dealing with people in crisis who have a lot of trauma. And just because there may be a system set up that we tell them about, they may not have the capacity to navigate it. So it's more handholding and support of of various types to help people actually access the services. So I think it's a human touch and and quite honestly, I I just want to acknowledge, I think the bench is very thin for for many of us now. And um, but that's a, that's an important aspect of the capacity that I think would be needed to provide more personal system navigation.
I mean, a little to the side here, but right with with the work that I'm doing with Monterey Peninsula Pride, we're struggling with this too, with folks contacting us about all the needs. And we just kind of got to the point of saying, maybe we just connect people to two-on-one, but I I see that problem there. Um, because everybody's issues are super specific to their situation. And so I think that idea of having um, more service um, support a- on the front end, I think would be extremely helpful. Thank you for the the response. I'm going to um, say two more questions and I'm going to pass this to staff and then I'll be done. I know, Mayor, you're trying to get me to wrap this up, so I appreciate everybody bearing with me here. Um, so the first is, would be to to Grant, I think specifically, and I'm wondering, how does the count methodology affect our point-in-time count numbers? Um, and 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 do we really think there was a dip in twenty nineteen, right? So the way that we're actually doing the the count, does that affect um, the numbers that we come up with in a substantial way? Um, and then are we, are we truly seeing a decline? Um, I know we are waiting for the numbers to come out from the last timing count. Um, but I'm that, I'll throw that question to you, and then I'm going to throw one to the police department. And just ask, um, what do you all think um, you see as your greatest challenge with M dot moving forward?
Okay, so the homeless point-in-time count happens every two years on a specific day in January or February. It's required by federal law. And uh, it has an add, an air of randomness to it in that it is entirely done by volunteers. So the Coalition of Homeless Service Providers recruits volunteers. Uh, you go out early in the morning, two, three in the morning, they give you coffee. Then you go and you try to locate unsheltered homeless people and interview them and confirm that they're homeless, and then you visit the shelters as well. Um, you know, if there's, um, so if it's raining, if it's particularly cold, if you don't get enough volunteers as you've had in years past, those can all affect the count. So it's, it's not an exact count, it's not like the U S Census Bureau where you get it in your mail and you turn it back. And so this year, they did have more volunteers, they did have, they believe, a higher success rate in that sense. So we'll probably have a a more accurate count this time. Uh, but this is really the baby of the Coalition of Homeless Service Providers, it's their mandate. Uh, so I'm speaking a little bit on their behalf, but that's my understanding of the process and how we get those numbers.
Thanks, Grant.
So council member, thank you for the question. Um, I, there's so many things that I see as as being issues and challenges. Uh, one of the biggest is the people, what Katie was talking about. We have an outstanding social worker, uh, Thomas Muir, who works for CHOP, who recently has no, has notified us that he's going to move out of state. That is a huge, huge, huge loss because he is so phenomenal. And there's not a lot of people that want to do that kind of work. So that's one issue. Um, housing is an issue. We know we don't have a lot of housing. Um, how do we address that? That's a super hard problem, because if if we go with some of these ideas, uh, folks, sometimes they're not going to want to have those uh, housing areas near where they live. So that creates an issue. One of the biggest issues we see is service resistance. So when we talk about homelessness, there's, there are people. So like everybody's talked about, it's not one homeless situation, there's all kinds of them. The people that we deal with most of the time in policing um, are service resistant. So even if we have the housing, they might not take it. Um, the governor came up with an idea a week or two ago that he was talking about for those who are mentally ill to compel treatment. So that if they've had several uh, holds, they don't just go through fifteen and twenty holes. They're compelled to get treatment. That's a whole different thought process. Um, and finally, while uh, you were asking that question, Rusty believes that navigation is the biggest issue. I'm going to let him speak to that, and that'll conclude our answer.
I I think what Katie was saying is very true. Uh, the the system is is very difficult to navigate. And that's what we learned back in two thousand and fifteen, and that's kind of how this whole um, M dot program started. Um, we we realized you you got, you know, different nonprofits and different organizations, and it was difficult for us to try to steer people in the right direction. Well, if it's difficult for us, you can imagine how difficult it is for people that have mental illness or substance abuse problems or both. And then you combine things like transportation and their ability to communicate, whether it be lack of having a phone or anything else. And it it's it's really a very, obviously a very complex issue. But trying to navigate that system on your own can be extremely challenging.
Thank you for the response, I really appreciate it. That's it for me, Mayor. You're muted, sir.
Thanks, I've got a little rat terrier who's on super watchdog mode right now, so I've had to mute this. But no, thanks Tyler for your your experience and your insights on this, appreciated the questions. Councilmember Ed?
Yeah, thank you very much, and thanks for the remaining time. I just want to rapidly go through my thoughts. Um, the frustration of of diving into something where we know it's a huge problem is that we are identifying the problem and we've recognized it's it's huge and complex. And now we have the the trying to find some solutions. Um, but the solutions take take their resources. And I'm not just speaking for just a municipal agency, but um, the county uh, that participates in this, community hospital, uh, mental health, and then all the, the non, non-governmental agencies, nonprofits that that we've heard from tonight in part. But also um, illuminating um, the problem and identifying the right solution and getting the right amount of resources is the frustration part, because we know the problem's big and we don't have enough money. And as Katie has mentioned, we we would like to have more personnel. Um, I want to just call out that all of the nonprofits heavily depend on donations from the community. So just a shout out to the community members that might be paying attention to this. Don't forget these nonprofits, because we've selected them to receive some of the city money, because they have proven themselves to be highly efficient, highly productive and results oriented. So the public needs to help in that partnership as well. The city's grant funding program, I'll just list out, it's in the staff report. Our giving has been one point two million dollars, one hundred and seven thousand, ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight, and last year, one seventy-two. So we wish that could be more. That is a a really tough time for us in the budget process, because we're always saying we want to do more, we wish we're, there were more dollars, but we we give where we can. So we want the public to help us too, and help you. Um, program, for me, my thinking is programs that treat, place, um, participate heavily in case management, and stay away from enabling and recycling are what I'm interested in in helping. And those nonprofit providers that we've, we've heard from tonight uh, do that, and thank you for that, because you recognize the long-term efforts. Uh, M dot isn't even listed in the cost of one point two million dollars. So just as a side note, uh, I can't even guess the cost with three or four people assigned. CHOP's money spent, uh, social services, uh, mental health, all the rest. If you put a price tag to M dot, uh, that number's going to blow you away in terms of the efforts that that's being done uh, with that great team, and keep it up, it's been, it's been awesome. Uh, Chief and um, others, your your team has been great. Um, also, um, it's been mentioned water, sustainable water. I I talk about it all the time, I'm not going to go into great detail here. But that is um, part of the problem for the shortage of the the housing as well as the the reason the costs are being driven so, so high. Um, anywhere in California and anywhere close to the Pacific Ocean, we all struggle as communities uh, with the price of property and housing. Um, voucher calculations, to me, it just seems like something's wrong between the state and Section Eight federal, where a voucher can't even get close enough to assist someone, where they qualified and you find a property that's willing to take it, but the the amount to the voucher is too little. So it seems like we ought to be talking to our congressman uh, about that, and our governor, in terms of the the voucher and the support system. I hear all the time that it's not enough money in the voucher to do enough good in Monterey County. Um, so that, just my closing thoughts for the nonprofits that came tonight, thank you for all those that do this hard work and with case management um, and and help fix lives, and a lot of times it's one life at a time. But we appreciate everything you do, and we'll continue as a city council to see if we can't come up with some ideas to help with this huge, huge problem. But uh, we all care about it and we we want to fix things long-term. And again, my my desire is that we don't waste our, our time and money with things that don't work, but we truly look at long-term solutions through case management and appropriate placement, and spend the time with those that want to receive it and and see if we can't grow the number of beds in in the proximity to Monterey that can provide some of the services that, you know, Stacy mentions that she needs. And I know she doesn't run the bed service at Gathered Place, it's just a day daytime. Uh, but we know interim needs more room. Uh, we know Veterans Transition Center needs more room. Stacy needs room, and uh, all the, all the rest nonprofits need some room. With that, we need water meters at those locations. And to help get that, continue to fight for sustainable water solutions to get meters, so we can build some housing beds. Uh, thank you, Mayor.
All right, yeah, thanks, everybody. I'm I'm not going to reiterate any of the great ideas that have been presented. I would just add two or three things for future deeper discussions. It was brought up, and I've heard this a number of times, and that's homeownership. That doesn't mean necessarily a single family dwelling, but homeownership is one of the keys to uh, breaking the cycle of poverty. The President Biden has talked about that. I've heard several representatives uh, throughout the country talking about opportunities for homeownership. Secondly, there's the whole idea of who can help provide housing. The city, as you know, we have our four lots, we have a pretty extensive uh, program. And schools, universities are starting to look at this, some are building them. But I I'm thinking that there are a lot of employers out there, major employers, possibly in the hospitality industry who have available land, as does the city of California. So we're probably going to start wanting to stretch our thinking. We did take a small step towards that when we looked at commercial properties on a ground floor facing a street being open to housing. But I can name four or five fairly large, empty restaurant complexes. And I think uh, it's all about partnerships. So cities and government can do a lot, they should. But I'm also thinking there's a responsibility for employers. And CHOP is another good example, where they did buy the building on Lighthouse. And that is, and they're also looking at more housing for doctor shortages. I'll stop, uh, just conclude, I was talking to one of my friends at church, and she visits regularly her uh, daughter and grandchildren up in the Bay Area, and I said, have you ever thought about moving closer to them? And she said, one-bedroom apartment up there was four thousand dollars. The same one-bedroom apartment in Coronado would probably push you to six thousand dollars. And another church friend was telling me, and I'd like to end with this, he's had an opportunity to work with our police department and do a lot of uh, support work, drive arounds. And he told me he was so impressed, and Esther did mention this as well, so impressed with our M dot team, our police team, how courteous they are with homeless, how helpful they are, knowing people by their names, and really on the front lines of outreach and referrals to many of the providers who are here today. So obviously, this is a a beginning and a summary of what's going on, and I look forward to doing what we can. And I think, just like we're writing letters to the state about water, I think it's time to write letters to the state about putting their money where their mouth is on the homeless situation. And I think we're finally getting to see some movement, because the electorate is saying it's it's time state to step up. Because a city of thirty thousand people can't do everything, but we certainly are willing to do all that we can. So once again, thank you, everyone. And if the providers have other things to do, well, yeah, you think? Yeah, we, we thank you all for being here. We're going to do one quick piece of business and then go to closed session. I have, I have a absolute, have to stop the six o'clock deadline for me, but the council can certainly go ahead after that. So with that, we'll close the presentation and the excellent discussion, and we have one consent item, and that's to, once again, authorize remote teleconference meetings for the city through April twenty-second. So I I think we've discussed this, I'll enter, I'll I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
If there's no other discussion, roll call, please.
And I do not see any hands raised at this time.
Oh, thank you for that.
Um, Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Hafa?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Robinson?
Yes. We're going to adjourn to closed session. This is the opportunity for any members of the public to talk about uh, a, any closed session items that they would like to. So we'll again, open it up to Clementine. Do we have anyone under public comments on our closed session?
Not at this time.
All right, then we will adjourn to closed session, and do we need to go to another Zoom link?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, I'm going to go hunting and see if I can find it. We'll see you all shortly.